We come to order, please. We just reconvened from closed session. I'd like to ask the attorney to make any comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. The council is in closed session this evening on three items. Initiation of litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9C, one case, and anticipated litigation, two potential cases. There was no action on any of those items. The final action, public employee appointment, will be continued to the end of the meeting.
Thank you. If we call to order the regular city council meeting at 7:04. Call, please.
Council members, Payne here. Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. Before we move on, Darrell, what part of the state are you at tonight teleconferencing?
Corona, California.
All right. Good town. Okay. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a silent prayer and followed by the flax salute. We could have a video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast in Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Hold on a minute. Okay, the first item we have is agenda approval, deletions and, excuse me, additions and/or deletions. And before I hear from other council members, I do have one item, which is my comment and two that I would like to bring forward before we have public comments. Okay. Are there any other items that need to be pulled or moved?
No. Questions for clarification. Are we going to take comments on your item?
Well, what I wanted to do is just make a statement and try to get response back from staff, you know, so that we could have a, just a regular council member, I mean, meeting kind of dedicated to this item. It is very important, so if you guys would allow me to go ahead, I have a little opening comments that I'd like to read, and then I will allow, if not allow, then I mean, I'll just propose a question. So, the item that I had put on, just so that everyone knows, was under my comments, Mayor Shelton, council discussion of possible amendment to the SOI application boundaries. And the recommendation was to discuss, provide direction to staff, which is what I want to do, take action as deemed appropriate. This SOI item was placed on the council meeting by me. Several questions need to be answered before we can move to a sound decision. But first and foremost, we need to have a council meeting with all council members present. Sorry, Darrell, I know that you're not here, but I believe it's very important if any of us, you know, were not here, so that this could be on Comcast and be videotaped. I know there are copious amounts of comments from individuals. Just as a reminder, I would like to let everyone know, because it's been circulated from time to time since I got on mayor, as back as mayor, I do not have any secret meetings. I do not have any backdoor meetings. You guys have heard me say repeatedly that, and I'm not trying to get on a soapbox, but, you know, if you have a disagreement with me or comments, let's have a cup of coffee, you know, let's ask appropriate staff to sit down. You know, one of the things that I did was, you know, we redeveloped or we restated, you know, the, actually, it was the mayor's development forum, and I'm proud, I know that it's moving kind of slow, but at least we're meeting. And other council members agreed on that. Now, let me ask. If you own property in the city, in or near the city, on the property line, that is the sphere of influence, wouldn't you want to be able to go through with an application process to develop that property if you so desired? That's the attempt that I'm trying to do. As mayor in the city of Galt, I believe that it is my responsibility to ensure that all possibilities of development are brought to council for final decision and/or approval. What I need and what we need to do as council is to continue to look at our tax base revenue. And I know that we all do, and we all strive to do that, and even the public citizens. Well, since our tax base is being depleted, you know, by the state of California, taking hundreds of thousands or possibly millions of dollars from us, we really need to look at everything. I'm just saying, we need to look at all projected projects in our community before we say no. I do have some questions, and I think all of us do. So, if you would allow me, I would like to read those questions. Do we wait for the HCP to be finalized and wait for the amendment process to be written? I know in the developer, in the mayor's development forum, they told us it could take two and a half to three years. We will have a presentation, I believe, that I can ask staff, September the 15th. Rich will be here and give us the full update and disclosure.
I believe that's the case.
I think that's what he confirmed to us, didn't he? And I think that's one of maybe the appropriate times. Some of the other things I have is, I want to know why we can't or can we ask, LAFCO, do we have to wait for the final approval of the SOI, the HCP, the general plan approval before asking for an amendment, if council so desired to wish to do an amendment? If we did, are there any issues? Well, we all know there's some issues. Well, what are they? I'd like to know. I keep hearing that, no, we can't ask, we can't ask. I don't, somebody please explain to me, we have people on staff and on council that are on some of these boards. Do we just tell the developers, thanks but no thanks, to any projects in this area or in around the community? Is there any applications, and I think this is very important, are there any applications on any development in the SOI boundaries? Are there any pre-annexation agreements being developed with staff and the city attorney? I do remember several months ago that we discussed that, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll, Ted, I'll ask you again, if, I believe with the city attorney that we were working with Delta Greens on that proposed project, but I don't know what the status is. And I'm not asking for, you know, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus or anything right now, just see there's some of the questions, and I'm sure the council and maybe some other people have some. I'm requesting that the city manager with appropriate staff, along with the city attorney, work together to prepare a staff report to include the answers to these questions and probably several others. When can this be completed, in the near future? I'm asking if any of this could be put together, Ted, do you, can you give me a projection? What I'm thinking is, is, this is my thought, okay? If we're going to have the HCP here, and he, and Rich, I believe, is his first name, and he's going to give us the full disclosure, it seems appropriate that at that same time we could maybe, if we can, you know, I'm trying not to do a special meeting.
What I would tell you, it will be dependent upon the questions that you ask.
Sure.
And how involved they are.
Sure.
I think a lot of the questions, the information may be there, and you may be able to have it at the same time that he comes.
Mm-hmm.
It depends just on how much detail.
Okay. Okay. And that's a good answer. Thank you. Well, I would like to close by asking, what reasonable changes can we make overall in the community? Let's just all think about that. If there are any other questions to be asked, I ask that, as usual, that you provide that to us in writing. And I'll ask council and you, the public, do you still wish to ask any questions or have any comments? I do ask that, as I've always said in the past, and I will say again, please be respectful, no yelling, and remember, hopefully, we can agree that we disagree on several things.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
May I make a comment?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to make a comment in response to you. What you've stated, this project's been on the books for six years. We've spent going back and forth. There's been many, many open sessions for people to ask questions and get answers. This is not about developers in general. This is about a particular developer with a particular plan. It's not about the, it's not about the project. It wasn't never about the project, or the previous one for that matter. It's always been about the location. This debate has gone on, I, in my opinion, way too long. I think it's time that we need to move on. We need to know where we sit today. We need to move forward with the way the sphere of influence was submitted to LAFCO. We need to get this project behind us and the general plan meeting, and we need to start focusing on other needs of the city. So, having said that, and somebody may have other comments to make, but I'm going to make a motion tonight that we move forward with the sphere of influence as it's submitted to LAFCO and not hold up this general plan any further.
There's a motion.
Let me ask attorney, because this was the discussion. You saw how, what I was attempting to do.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that before you entertain any motions from council, that you take any public testimony on this item, and then, and then after that, it'd be appropriate to entertain any motions.
I think maybe some of the other council members might have a comment before we do that, though. But you have.
I do. I wanted to start off by saying that I'm disappointed that we won't be hearing this issue tonight in its entirety. I think all of you are here tonight because you've heard about this meeting via the newspaper or comments at previous council meetings. I think all of us came into tonight's meeting with the anticipation that once and for all we would be, we would be either moving this project forward or moving forward with the general plan and turning back on any, any options of redrawing the SOI. I fear that the reason that this has been pulled off the agenda tonight is because recent newspaper articles have already predicted the outcome of the vote, and we're stalling tonight in an attempt to give outside special interests more time to arm-twist members of the council to change their vote. I'm really disappointed. I hope that council reconsider's and decides to move on tonight with making a decision on this project.
Sure.
I would like to remind the people of Galt that the general plan at one time had included this in the, in the sphere of influence. It's not anything new. And it was changed at that, when the new council of, I think that was 2004, came on board, it was changed. So, this is not the only reason that the general plan is slowed down. But more to the point, we didn't have all the information. We didn't know about the restrictions that the Habitat Conservation Plan could put on our future. For example, it is, it's documented, it's a 50 to 75-year plan, and at this point, they don't want to consider anything that is not already in our sphere of influence for development. The other point I'd like to make, unfortunately, with the economy like it is, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, there isn't really any development or anything going on. So, the loss of time that we might have in order to look at the future of Galt and how it's affected, I think losing a little bit more time on the general plan, if you balance that against 50 years of who knows what's going to happen to us, or nothing's going to happen to us, is worth the loss of time. That's my comment.
Okay. Darrell? Darrell, do you have any comments?
No, not really. I mean, we have an item that's on the agenda, it's your item, you can do what you want with it. If we proceed tonight, I'm prepared to listen to the facts that are presented by the community and the staff and vote. If it's a choice to have this in a special setting with more time spent on it, more information, and more background from our own staff on the effects, then I'll vote on it at that time. So, whatever the pleasure is.
Okay. That's my, that is my direction. I believe as a council member, I do have the right to ask staff to do some things. And I mean, I'll take public comment, but, you know, I would like to have a, an answer as to, you know, Sep, I just threw out there September the 15th, but I mean, certainly everyone has the right to speak.
I think we have a motion on the floor before you can respond to that. I think you need to know what the response is to the motion.
I mean, the item that's on the, Mr. Mayor, the item that is on the agenda is a fully agendized item. It says that it's on for council discussion of possible amendment of SOI application boundaries, discuss, provide direction to staff, and take action as deemed appropriate. So, if it were to be continued to a, another item, the council can do that if it's the council's desire, or you can proceed to hear it tonight. I do not believe that it is under the control of one member. It is on your full city council agenda.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Okay.
Public comment.
The first speaker sheet on this issue is Matty Shepherd.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, and friends and citizens of Galt. I come before you on the basis that this was on the general plan. I was one of the original ones to help work on this, and as Ms. Payne spoke regarding it being pulled from the 2004 council people, 2006, I stand corrected. It's still a mystery to me as to why it was ever even pulled. It was part, part of our sphere of influence. And I agree with the mayor that obviously there needs to be a little bit more information brought forth so that you can make a concise decision on this. Half information and just rushing through this is really not necessary. You've, it seems like it, your feet have been drugged all this time for six years. And to me, that was, that wasn't necessary. But if you're dragging your feet on this for six years, then you can drag your feet just a little bit longer and get all the information that you need to make a good decision for the city of Galt. The other comment I have, and that's for you, Mr. Mayor, or for the chief of police, I really want to thank you and/or the safety committee for finally doing something about the hedges on C Street and Second, so we can see the stop sign. And so, the sign, something was finally done. I don't know how long it's going to last, because bushes do grow quite rapidly on that corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Matty. And Matty, council member Don Haynes is on that committee, too. He's on the, on the safety committee.
Rick Walters?
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. I have a letter that I'm preparing to send out, and I wanted to read it to this council before I do. It's going to be addressed to the Attorney General of the State of California, the Board of Supervisors, the Air Quality Control Board, the Water Quality Control Board, to whom it may concern. About four months ago, I asked our city attorney and city clerk to look into a matter that has been, been going on for years. The information I read at the council meeting indicated that two of our councilpersons, Payne and Shelton, were deeply involved in a political action committee. The city attorney and city clerk refused to answer my questions. As a result, I have no choice but to ask for help from beyond this body of power. The information I shared with them and the community clearly shows a connection. Enclosed is that information. In my opinion and other concerned citizens, the information that I have provided clearly shows a bias and ethics violations. Our general plan is in jeopardy of being pulled back because of the councilperson's involvement with this committee. Emails have shown this involvement clearly and distinctively. This information is also going to be included to these entities. As far as we can tell, Payne and Shelton are still involved with this political action committee, because no letter of resignation has been sent or heard of. The costs associated with this pullback of our general plan will be significant, and the taxpayers will be asked to pay more money for a plan that is already completed. Thank you for looking into this matter. Sincerely, Richard Walters.
Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please.
Jerry Stripling.
One moment. My name is Jerry Stripling. I have lived in Galt all my life, 63 years. I've heard of this Del Webb, Delta Green, Mike Guthridge, Chungmei Dodge's program they want to put together out here that borders the fence of the Galt wastewater treatment plant. It borders it, right up against it. I've been opposed to it all along, and I always will be. Right now, the sphere of influence has spent on the, or Galt has spent over 865,000 that, as far as I understand, and if that's, my figures are off, Mr. Campigan, he might be able to tell you exactly what we spent so far. If you're going to delay this, you will put another burden on the city of Galt. They want to put in a senior citizens deal. You will be sued by every environmental group in the country. Right now, Del Webb has a senior citizens group, or whatever you want to call it, anyway, a complex up in Reno. People are moving out of it, not into it, right now. I have friends that live in one right up in Reno right now, and they said, we are bound and determined to get out of it. You will bring approximately, these houses will probably bring between, oh, they could bring over half a million dollars, some of them, on this so-called golf course. You're not going to push the people of Galt in this golf course. You're going to put somebody in there from San Francisco or LA that has sold something that they can afford to move in this. I know one thing, there's no way in heck I could move out there, and I've lived here all my life, 63 years. I do not support any kind of a, any kind of a delay. I think you should vote on it now. I have known about this project from 12 to 15 years, longer than most of you people have been in this town. They've been working on it. Mike Guthridge and Chungmei Dodge have both been working on this. This is a very good project, but it is definitely in the wrong spot. The city of Galt will be sued and have to defend themselves. It's time to set this aside. We voted on it, we've had many a meeting, we need to put this to rest. I thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Sean Worth. I'm with the Sierra Club. I think part of what's going on tonight is a confusion over what the Habitat Conservation Plan actually means in terms of something like this Delta Greens project. An HCP in effect in this area is not going to preclude projects that are not within the sphere of influence of a given city. What it means is they cannot participate in the Habitat Conservation Plan in terms of streamlining permits, et cetera. They'll have to do a separate consultation, which is how it is right now. So essentially, the development process will be no different than it is right now with no HCP. I think you also need to realize that the particular area we're talking about, the Delta Greens area, also called Area G in the past, is a critical habitat area, and the Habitat Conservation Plan gets the first part of its name, Habitat, because it's habitat-driven. The idea is to protect viable habitat for threatened species. This is a perfect example of an area to set aside, because it already has immediate proximity to a large preserve area. One of the purposes behind doing a landscape-wide conservation plan is to create very large, very viable preserves. This is a perfect example of a piece of land that could be purchased and added to an already extensive preserve. So that would be the most likely use for it with the HCP in terms of all the environmental suing. I don't know about that, but I've been on the HCP steering committee for three years, and I'll be sure to drive home the importance of this area in terms of habitat. It's pretty late in the game to try to do this type of amendment in terms of the cost to your citizens, and it's really unnecessary. This process can go on as it would today. There's really no difference between HCP. You won't get the streamlined processes that the HCP provides, but you wouldn't today anyway. So, I think it's a bit of hyperbole to say this is somehow knocking you out of the, out of the game. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Worth, if you don't mind, I have a couple of questions. How long has the HCP been in process, I mean, in the planning process?
Well, to 13 years, and probably it'll be finished more or less on time for one reason, and that's the Section 40 water.
And as I understand it, all the stakeholders, including developers, that haven't, have had an opportunity through the process in which to contribute their concerns or their opinions or otherwise, correct?
It's been a public process, so it has been open and available for the entire time, and people are still making comments up, up to this point.
And part of the intention of the HCP is also to make it easier for developers to get permits, make it less expensive and less, a little bit more hassle for you, for the most part, for the majority of them, I would assume, of the developers, from what I've read on this.
The idea is to streamline the permit process, and in exchange for that, create landscape-sized preserves. So, the assumption is that within the urban services boundary, there will be more or less full build-out, and that will be offset with mitigation outside the urban services boundary.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question, too?
Sure.
Would whoever, I don't know if it's the Sierra Club, would they be willing to buy that land at the market, fair market price now, to go ahead and put it in the nature conservancy or put it aside for mitigation?
Well, I think a more interesting prospect would be, would that land be purchased through the Habitat Conservation Plan? And it would be an absolutely perfect fit for that. And it'll be a perfect fit, because it already is in proximity to a large preserve area. If you get a piece of land that's separated, sitting by itself, surrounded by development, its viability for habitat isn't great, because there's no ability to remove edge pressure, and there's no ability for those animals to move from one area to another preserve. So, the position of this place is what makes it prime for...
Where would that money come from?
Where would the money come from? The way the Habitat Conservation Plan is planned to be set up, anybody who develops pays a fee, and that fee is supposed to generate a one-to-one mitigation. So, if you develop one acre, you pay for one acre of land. So, someone would be building something, potentially now grow, potentially here in Galt, and that money would go to buy those lands for fair market value. And mitigation land sells for quite a bit more than agricultural land.
I'm curious, though, if they, if the developer, well, in this case, there's not any development going on, how, how then would you pay for it? Would it just sit there until development picked up again, and they would need mitigation? Is that the way it would work?
I think we're conflating two things. I think we're conflating, is this land, it would be desirable to purchase for, say, the nature conservancy or a group like that? I don't work with them, I don't have an answer for that. I would assume that, yes, it would be of interest. I think it would also be of interest to something like Sac Valley Conservancy. In terms of the HCP, if there's no development, there's no land being purchased.
That's about the point. So, we don't have a pot of money sitting out there that we can purchase this land, and that's the end of it?
Well, another aspect of it is that, once the HCP is in place, there's going to be a certain amount of land... a certain amount of land, ten to twelve thousand acres, that's gonna be purchased above and beyond the mitigation. That would be a potential way to get the land.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dick Smith. Been with Galt for fifteen years. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but unfortunately, I couldn't stand it any longer. Number one, all the comments about the Delta Greens project being next to the sewer plant is wrong. It's over three thousand feet away. Secondly, I understand that the city has already said they don't need any more property. And third, the Delta Greens project would take the excess water for irrigating their lands and this type of thing. Secondly, I do commend our two congressmen here for supporting the concept of a senior retirement community, but they say it's in the wrong location. And let me just bring out a couple of very interesting points. In the middle of June, a report came out that in order to go ahead and put a road system around on the east side to service something like that, it would cost three-hundred-and-seventy million dollars. That is just the roads. It has nothing to do with handling the infrastructure, the water, the sewers, and everything else to service the six thousand acres on the other side of Marengo. How are we gonna pay for it? The money's not there, the state's not there. And as far as I can see, the only tax revenue coming in in the near future to the city would come from Delta Greens. The third thing I'd like to point out, at the HCP meeting when Mr. Hahn was here, I asked him directly if he had ever walked out on that property. He said, "No." Well, I have, I've been out there several times, I've driven it out. It is absolutely flat property, and there's some that's not quite flat, but it is, it has plenty of room to butt up to the nature conservancy and the river over there. It's been planted, it's flat, I saw no birds around, I saw no dale snart, I didn't see any kind of pools around, I saw nothing in the way of habitat except for three trees, and there were a couple of little birds running along on the road. And this is unfortunate because we spent an hour and a half with the Lodi New Sentinel talking about the importance of this property, and she did a nice job of reporting it, except for one thing, she did not report the financial implications and what it could do to help the city of Galt. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Just a point of clarification, I think the report that Mr. Smith is referring to was not prepared by an independent party, wasn't prepared by anyone here on the staff, it was prepared by an engineer working for the Delta Greens project. So just to put that all into perspective, on where those numbers came from.
Next speaker, please. You got lost.
I am unsure of whether Mr. Slinkard wishes to speak at this point. Hmm? Oh, Mr. Slinkard, did you wish to speak at this point?
My name is Jerry Slinkard. I live in Sacramento County. I'm a civil engineer, and I've been assisting Delta Greens landowners for nearly fifteen years. Yes, I have a son that lives in Galt. Yes, I support and work with PGF, who have the good and noble intentions of fighting for the betterment of their city. Yes, I support the Delta Greens and Dias's property owners that have a right to fight for their property rights. Yes, I communicate with Barbara Payne and other councilmen as well by email. I also talk to Barbara and other councilmen in person and on the telephone. I consider Barbara an outstanding councilwoman who is committed to doing an excellent job for the city of Galt. I can no longer remain silent while a few people, aided by the biased local media, are trying to smear and intimidate Barbara Payne to refrain from voting on this most crucial issue facing the city of Galt. Why do I feel the media is biased? It doesn't take a rocket science scientist to figure out when all you read is one side of a story. Let's put the media coverage in context. Do you think the local media might lean in the direction of the environmental lobbyists when the husband of the editor works for the nature conservancy, the same organization Mr. Eaton supports and wants to work? And did you know that Mr. Eaton's wife is the Lodi New Sentinel's media law attorney? Barbara, you've done nothing wrong. You are doing the job the voters of Galt elected you to do, and that is to work for the well-being of your city. You have no personal agenda, you are not receiving any personal benefits for your strong stance regarding Delta Greens. You are only looking out for the well-being of Galt. You are the councilperson that everyone should strive to be. You are immersed in the city and all its charity functions. You are open and visible and willing to listen. You openly campaigned in the last election supporting the Delta Greens project because you know this upscale seniors' project would provide needed jobs, demographics, infrastructure so desperately needed to stimulate commercial investment on Highway ninety-nine and for your downtown. You voted against Raboy's action to remove Delta Greens from the general plan. The voters responded to you by re-electing you to the city council with the highest number of votes of any of the nine candidates. Over sixty percent of the votes cast went to you, Mayor Shelton, and three other candidates who all openly supported Delta Greens. Tim Raboy received sixteen-point-three percent of the votes and lost his seat on the council. I feel the silent majority has spoken through the ballot box. Regarding the emails so widely publicized, let's take a look at what this is all about. It's strictly a harassment and intimidation campaign. First of all, Barbara did not hesitate to turn over copies of all emails, even those on her private computer. Barbara has nothing to hide. Many of the emails over the last three years with me involved Barbara's concern over the Galt's financial well-being and how Delta Greens project might help the city. Barbara expressed her concern about the four-hundred-million-dollar capital improvement plan deficit that is facing the city of Galt and how Delta Greens might help. I also provided an evaluation of a regional option for the treatment plant that involved interaction with Barbara. All of this activity involved email communication. Studying the issues, talking to principals, talking to voters, and promoting a cause that will benefit the city makes Barbara more qualified to vote, not less. If you take the argument that Mr. Slaughterback and Mr. Walters have widely expressed in the biased media, then should Mr. Meredith and Mr. Haynes not vote because they have talked to or received emails from Mr. Eaton, Slaughterback, or Walters? This is a ridiculous claim. Barbara, we know the majority of voters have high respect and trust in you. They all stand as a unit to support you. Intimidation and threats have been longstanding hallmark of Mr. Eaton towards the city of Galt for many years. The Lodi New Sentinel reported Eaton recently threatened to sue the city of Galt over council emails. This is not a new tactic. In nineteen-ninety-five, Mr. Eaton was associated with the Sierra Club and the nature conservancy. At that time, these groups threatened to sue Lavco and the city of Galt because the SOI at that time included the Delta Green property. To avoid a lawsuit, Lavco asked the nature conservancy and the landowners to meet and to see if the environmental objections could be resolved. Mr. Eaton was instrumental in brokering a land transaction between the Waylys and the Neirs, and where promises were made by Mr. Eaton that the nature conservancy would not oppose a senior project on the Delta Greens land. This land transaction cost the Delta Greens landowners over five-hundred-thousand dollars and enabled the nature conservancy and the State Department of Fish and Game to acquire over fourteen-hundred acres of sensitive environmental land adjacent to the Delta Greens property at a bargain price. This land is now a part of the Consumed This River Preserve due to the generous contribution of the Delta Green landowners. Why Mr. Eaton, who was involved in promises made to these landowners that the project would not be opposed, is now leading opposition against this project?
I told you that your time is up, sir. Sorry, you ran out of time.
I got two more sentences.
No.
Eric, I'd like to...
Sorry. Thank you, Jerry.
Mayor, if I can respond, I would like to make a comment. I don't have any questions for you. I just want to make a comment regarding Mr. Slinkard's comments about intimidations and that, but I'm only gonna make a brief statement because you talk about intimidations and threats, and nonetheless, and you talk about the last election. What you failed to mention is that about thirty to forty thousand dollars was pumped into a smear campaign to re, to not only push one council member out of office, but also to recall two others. I've got the returns right here, Mr. Slinkard. Mr. Chungmei Dodge is the one who is a major contributor to this. You failed to mention that. So you're talking about intimidation and threats. Mr. Raboy, who lost the last election, didn't have that funding and support. Maybe he had, maybe the outcome might have been different. So when you talk about the quiet minority or majority having spoken, those people didn't have all the facts in front of them. So it wasn't a legitimate campaign or election, in my opinion, based on the money that was pumped into it. So I just wanted to point that out. And it was a smear campaign, it was a dirty campaign. And I, I wasn't gonna say anything, but to hear you, you know, I'm sure you put a lot of time into your speech, and I can appreciate it, but you tend to leave a lot of facts out. Thank you.
Okay. Doc, the next speaker, please.
Al, did you intend to speak under public comment, or, okay. Then, Mike, you're gonna wait until public comment or speak now? Okay. And that's it? No.
No, this is public comment regarding...
Regarding this particular issue?
Right.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, we didn't, we were confused, we didn't know which you wanted to speak on. Was this item or just a...
We're all kinda confused, I believe, so... Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of Galt and city council members. I'd like to take this time to express my opinions and comments about the Delta Greens project. All I can do is write for Galt, citizens young and old in this community. This project, in my opinion, will do nothing but good for our community and the city. It will only create jobs in our area, but it will increase our tax base, our future infrastructure, and attract new business to our area. It'd be nice for us to be able to tell new businesses that are interested in starting up in this town that we have the infrastructure to accommodate their business. This would also increase our tax revenue even more. The Delta Greens project will help our senior citizens of today and tomorrow. Our seniors need a central location where they can shop locally, take walks in a beautiful, with a beautiful view, have medical and fire close in case of emergency. We need to get this project up and running. Now, I'd like to address the attacks of one of our council members, Barbara Payne. Everybody has a right to an opinion, even any South Dakota city council member, but in the last couple of weeks, a lunch mob has been trying to instill doubt to the cities, citizens of Galt, as to the integrity and ethics of our vice mayor, Barbara Payne. The persons who I speak of are environmentalists, Mike Eaton and company, Rick Walters, Cliff Lofton, Danny Minas, and John Slaughterback, and I'm sure Tim Raboy's in the mix somewhere. They have been trying to advocate that private emails from public officials be made public and threaten to lawsuit to accomplish this. If this is the case, Mr. Slaughterback and his group better start advocating that the city spend more money on cameras and microphones to install in their office in the city of Galt so that they can be viewed and listened to by anyone at the public, it seems, deems necessary. Sounds ridiculous, right? Well, it is. This is the last ditch effort for the lunch mob to put a stop to the Delta Greens project. In the Galt Herald article dated August twelfth of this year, Rick Walters quoted as saying, "We are not against the Delta Greens." This is not true. Mr. Walters and his group have been expressing extreme displeasure for the Delta Greens project from the beginning. The Delta Greens project would provide much-needed jobs and revenue for the town of Galt. I would like to ask Mr. Walters and Mr. Slaughterback and Mr. Yuminas if they supported, with all due respect, Donald Haynes and Andrew Meredith because of their position against the development of Delta Greens project. And have you had conversations about the issue, including Barbara Payne in the city hall parking lot with Mr. Haynes and Mr. Meredith? Is this not public information? In my opinion, these folks are acting like a group of little children throwing themselves on the floor and having a temper tantrum because they can't have things their way. So after this lunch mob stomped and, uh, stomped their feet and shook their fists and screamed at the top of their lungs, Ms. Payne turned over her private emails for public view. Mr. Slaughterback and his group of concerned citizens, quote-unquote, say they are looking out for Galt, but they threaten a lawsuit that no would waste fifty thousand dollars or more of taxpayers' money. Mr. Slaughterback and his boys scrutinized Ms. Payne's emails only, uh, and only gave the Galt Herald and Lodi New Sentinel part of the emails that they wanted the public to see fit, the stories they formulated. Slaughterback and his crew had their views published about why they thought Ms. Payne should take herself out of voting for the Delta Greens project. At the end of the article, it stated Ms. Payne did not respond to the questions about the issue. According to Ms. Payne, she was not contacted for rebuttal. Ms. Payne makes herself available five days a week from one o'clock in the afternoon to three o'clock unless she has a meeting. I have a question, Mr. Slaughterback. Did you or anybody of your group ever go down to talk to Barbara Payne at her office and ask for explanation of her private emails? I doubt it. Should Mr. Meredith and Mr. Haynes rescue themselves from the Delta Greens project because they received illegal campaign contributions from an environmental group of which Mike Eaton is part of? Have Mr. Meredith or Mr. Haynes had any conversations about the Delta Greens-Barbara Payne issue with any members of that group? Have you, uh, if you have it your way, then it should be, this should be disclosed and made public. This latest contrib over emails and, uh, is public property, it's just a smokescreen on the, part of the lunch mob to, uh, to put a stop to this Delta Greens project. Ms. Payne has no agenda here. She's not trying to get any political seat in Sacramento, or she's not trying to receive any financial gain. Ms. Payne only wants to do is write for her citizens in the town of Galt. Ms. Payne has involved herself with several different communities and clubs to help give these organizations support and guidance. Ms. Payne is not only an upstanding citizen with good morals and values, but she should be applauded for her efforts and contributions to the community of Galt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor, I'd like to make a correction to a statement that was made, if you don't mind, just briefly. First and foremost, I have never opposed the senior project, I simply oppose the location of placing one there and any other development, that's a fact. I've never once. You talk about creating dispersions or smokescreens, Mike, I think it was inappropriate for you to accuse me of receiving illegal campaign contributions. I challenge you, sir, to provide the facts, and I'm telling you that openly, and I think it's, I, I think it's a shame that when you come up here and make those statements, you should at least be able to support those facts. That's important. As far as the environmentalist goes, this issue here tonight isn't about this party or that party. The issue's about the sphere of influence and what the discussion was supposed to develop. Correct me if I'm wrong there?
That's why I wanted a special meeting.
I, I just wanted to clear that up. That's all I really have to say.
Okay.
Mr. Baldwin? Singleton, Singleton.
We ready?
Go ahead, Al.
Al Baldwin, I'm very concerned about Galt. I've been concerned for many years. I've been coming to these meetings for many years. I, I'm a bit concerned because when people come in and they want to get voted on the council, they sit there, they answer questions, and they say, "Well, I want this, and I want that, and I'm going to get it. And what I want is this, and what I want is to get the sphere of influence and the general plan completed as soon as possible. I want all this." Well, you know, and those are good things to say, and people believe you, and they consider those things as promises. And every one of you have probably said this, but none of you have said, "My wants will never take precedence over the needs of Galt." And tonight, there's a need for Galt to get a little bit behind this, this sphere of influence and bring it in, bring that property in, and anything else that you want to bring in to control it. Now, let me ask, I'm just, since I know very little, you guys are all the intelligent ones, I'm sure you're very smart at what you do. The wastewater treatment plant, and someone said it just borders right up to Delta Greens where they want to build. Well, how did they get approved? Did they go through the same thing? Did they go through the same environmental stuff? Did they get threatened to be sued if they put that in there? Because it's right there next to the environmentalists, right there. That would be more of a threat than homes in there for old people. It, it's another thought, you know, that, that you gotta look at. How did they get approved and, and Delta Greens can't? I would suggest that you look into this and see if you can get the sphere changed. Now, you say, "Oh, that's a delay, that's gonna take way too long." Well, we've had this thing way too long, over the past six, ten years. Now, the question is, is why did it take so long even to get to this point? There's a reason for it. It's either lack of communication with councils or politics have come into it, people have thought it should go in, maybe it shouldn't, maybe we shouldn't increase our sphere this far. Daryl wanted to go all the way up to Arnold Road, which, hey, that doesn't sound bad, it's got a bridge going over it, he was for that, he advocated it, he pushed for it, and he had to back down and go just a quarter of a mile north of Twin Cities Road. Then he... Then he says, "I want the sphere, I want the general plan done." He made that promise. He says, "I'm going to get that done. That's been my goal, my goal." Well, as it's been said, if you find things after you've approved it, if there's a chance that you weren't informed, and now it's a better idea not to have it done until we get all the information and really know what we're doing because we may not have been informed, well, then, then I think you might want to try looking at it and see if you have all the information and if you have to delay it. I'm assuming, and I've heard, that the people that have that property over there would even pay for any dollar amount that they're going to charge, LAFCO is going to charge you for, or any of their paperwork or looking into it or whatever. It's a win-win for you. The thing is, is nothing's going to be developed in this town in the sphere of influence for a number of years, twenty years, fifteen years. I think it's going to be a long, long time with the economy the way it is. So what difference does it make if you take a longer time to get the general plan done? There's no reason, there's no logic to this. It's just a politician's move. And I'll tell you, if you really think about this, stand back and look at it, and I'm just doing it for the ordinary old citizens thing. Why would somebody want to get the conservancy over there behind them? Is it possibly that maybe in the future that they might be able to help you if you want to grow in politics? I don't know. But there's some other things involved in this thing besides this little piece of three or four hundred acre parcel of land that they've been developing on. It's three hundred acres that the wastewater treatment plant's been developed on. I would say the wastewater treatment plant would be more of a hindrance to the habitat than these homes. It just seems, and the homes will help Galt. So what I'm saying is, is the wants that the people say they want on the council and leaders are not necessarily what the city needs. And you've got to put your wants second and the city's needs first. And to attack people on the council through emails, that's nothing but just hogwash. This is just a political ploy, if you think about it. That's all it is. And if you fall for it, then you deserve everything you get. It's all a political ploy. Barbara is extremely good in what she did and does. And I'm sure the rest of you are probably as good in things you do. So, you know, this is all politics. Sit back, look at it, think about it. It's politics. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Al. I'm back. Okay. Are there any other public comments?
I have no additional.
On that item? Okay. There was a motion on the floor. Darrell, did you have any other comments?
Oh, thank you.
Keep forgetting about when someone's on teleconferencing. Okay, there was a motion. Your motion...
This is a point of clarification. Can we have the motion restated?
My motion is that we move forward with the sphere of influence and general plan as submitted and the way it was intended with LAFCO.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any comments from council members?
Just one, one brief comment. Something that's getting lost in this whole argument, ladies and gentlemen, is that less than ten months ago, we had the opportunity to vote on the general plan. This was after the election that Mr. Slinkard references as the turn of the tide for the silent majority in the community. Council had an opportunity at that time to redraw the boundary lines. Nothing happened. But now we have a developer that's come forward for the Delta Greens project. He wants this project to be done quickly, and he's a businessman. You can't fault him for that. That's the only reason we're looking at this again tonight. It has nothing to do with the HCP. It has nothing to do with issues about insufficient amount of homes or rooftops in the general plan. It has to do with the fact that a developer wants to build on that property. It's the only reason we're talking about it. So if council members were elected because they supported this project, they had an opportunity ten months ago to make changes, and they didn't. And here we are, ten months later, arguing about the same thing that has divided our community for fifteen years. Eventually, we are going to have to let this go. Compromise. Take this project concept and find two landowners in our proposed SOI and get them to bring this project forward on a different location. Everyone will be happy. We'll get the rooftops, the additional sales tax, and we'll avoid the costly litigation that I think is going to happen if we develop the Delta Greens property.
Mayor, I had a question for you.
Okay.
Your, well, I guess for the whole council, but using your proposal. The debate seems to center around that the two are mutually exclusive. What I thought you proposed was to get more information.
Yes, that is.
Okay. Is there some reason why we can't continue with our general plan and the sphere and still get more information?
I don't know. Can someone answer that question? That's why I wanted a special meeting, so we wouldn't take up all of this time on this thing.
The motion on the floor is to continue with our current sphere, which we're already doing.
Right.
So unless we vote to stop that, we're just voting to do what we're already doing. The question you, I believe, are posing was, can we get additional information?
Yes, that's what was my question.
Can staff or anyone answer if there's some conflict between those two?
Darrell, let me answer. I made the motion, and the reason I made the motion is this debate has gone on way too long. You are as familiar with this as anyone else. I think it's important that the public at least know where we stand as a council. If it's your wish that you do not want to just... I think you need to reconfirm that we're moving forward, that we're not going to consider this project. It's, I mean, we've been over this again and again. If it's your choice that you wish not or not to proceed, then I would hope that you would explain yourself and then make your vote known.
Well, and that's what I'm about to do. I'm trying to find out if the two are somehow mutually exclusive. Because I don't see that they are. And I'll be glad to explain myself if that helps understand the question I'm asking. I mean, the item on tonight's agenda is our sphere of influence. It has nothing to do with Delta Greens or any other project.
Correct.
In fact, the item on the agenda doesn't even propose, if there were to be a change in the sphere, what it would even be. Anyone who's heard me speak on this over, I don't know how many seven years I've been on the council, shouldn't have any question as to how I feel about this. I've heard countless hours of testimony. I've read hundreds of pages of reports. None of it's changed my core belief. My belief has always been that that land ought to be under the jurisdiction of our city, which is different than that that land should have Delta Greens or anything else on it. And where a lot of confusion occurs is that people assume one equals the other, and I would say greatly they do not. In fact, I've said for some time, I don't know if a project, an actual project, will ever come forward. So far, it hasn't. We have no project in front of us. We don't have projects for most of the land in our sphere of influence. And I've said consistently, I am open to a senior-type project. No one's convinced me that I should support, as I've said, houses with kids on that land. I don't see a need for that. I don't know that I would support a senior project when I saw the final project. I've said repeatedly, it's got tons of hurdles to get over and objections. But I've also said I'd like to see facts, not everybody's version of what it might be. So where I'm prepared to vote tonight is consistent with what I've said along. I am not going to slow down the general plan. And so I have no problem, per se, voting for what you're proposing, Don, because it's just reinforcing what we're already doing. But there's no need to change the general plan to get more information.
I would ask...
And I don't, you know, I don't support a change in the general plan tonight. I don't support a change in the sphere of influence tonight. But I don't see how that changes ever getting information. Someday in the future, who knows what could change?
Darrell, the only purpose to actually bring that property into the sphere of influence is really for development. There's no other reason to do it other than that.
Well, I heard tonight, one of my strongest citizens said that we ought to control it.
Right.
Except the representative from, I think he said the Sierra Club, said that that land might be ideal to mitigate Elk Road's development. Are you kidding me? It's our job to mitigate Elk Road's development? Or the county's or anybody else's? I have fought, and I think all of you have fought way too long, to protect our city and not to be somebody else's mitigation, not to be somebody's bedroom community so the jobs can be in downtown Sacramento? It's time Galt stands up for itself. I've believed that the entire time I've been in the city. I haven't changed that opinion. I'll reiterate, I don't support slowing down the general plan. I don't support changing the sphere of influence at this time. I do support the ability to get information for years and years to come, and I don't see the two are mutually exclusive.
Darrell, if I could ask you, if we get more information that is valuable, and we've already voted to not change our sphere of influence, would that make sense? I would think we'd want to get as much information before we make this vote. And if we're looking at just a couple of...
I'll reiterate. I can't imagine what it would be, but I'm always open to hear more information that would change my mind at this point of the process.
Darrell, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I know you have concerns about whether or not whether it be HCP that might have anything to do with the property or whatnot. But if your intention is, you're talking about Galt having control over the property. And are you telling me that you're entertaining the thought that it could be used for anything, being so close to the wastewater treatment plant and all the other issues we spoke about? Are you telling me that you would entertain the thought of building out there?
I've always said I'd entertain the thought of it. I think the city council has an obligation to entertain any project brought before us in the proper process. We put our hand in the air and swore an oath we would. So, you know, none of us should categorically say we would never look at something that came before us. I'm saying very clearly, I can't fathom in any near future what would come before me to change the general plan or the sphere of influence. Having said that, I don't know why we would categorically reject getting any information as it comes forth. The two, to me, are not exclusive.
Okay, I respect that. My motion's simply to put this particular project behind us, to move forward and just simply submit it, and I'll stand on that.
If I could just make one more comment. I know everyone's getting tired of hearing this. But one of the big issues when the Habitat Conservation Plan was discussed at a previous council meeting was they had no, at that time, they had no way of, or they had not addressed any amendment to the HCP. In other words, what would they do if they wanted to allow other land to come in? And I think that's a very important issue that we would need to hear. And I think it's supposed to be available for us when they come and make their presentation.
On September fifteenth.
And I think that is something that you might be really concerned about.
Well, like I said, the general plan is moving forward. It should be allowed to move forward with the current sphere of influence. And at this time, I don't support slowing that process down, which we aren't. And again, I don't see, it's going along. We've directed staff to go along. We aren't voting tonight to slow that down. That's good. But the fact that the mayor wants information, that's fine, too. And we're going to get information about the HCP as it progresses because we're supposed to. I mean, it's not finished. It's not adopted. We will get the final language, and we should participate in the process. So I don't know why anyone sees the two that have to either be tied together or exclusive, because I can't fathom how they are. And if I'm not being clear enough to those who are wondering, I'm not proposing to slow down the general plan. As I've said, I want it adopted. I want the potential jobs in retail that can come on the ninety-nine corridor that I personally fought for before I ever got on the council and continue to. And whatever happens in the years and decades to come, there's processes in place for that. And they'll be whatever they are, probably long after most of us are on the city council.
Okay.
So I don't know that I want to support your motion, Don. I don't have a problem with your motion because it's just reiterating the direction we've given. But if your motion is to preclude the mayor's request for information, then I wouldn't support that if you want to amend it. I mean, we can't pass a motion that people can't ask questions. That's not, I don't even think a little...
Darrell, yeah, no, I think we're going to go back and forth on this. But my point is simply this, is that I think we need to come to some sort of agreement that we're going to let the general plan be completed. We're not going to pull back that sphere and change it or amend it at this point. We're going to let it be completed. That's what my motion is, that we will not pull back the general plan or the sphere of influence for amendment. We're going to let it be completed, completed going through LAFCO. And we're not going to consider that project under the current circumstances.
Be careful again. There is no project, so...
Well, you're right. You're right, Darrell.
You keep saying there are.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
For the city council.
I agree with you. You're right. What I'm saying is, we're not going to consider changing the sphere of influence for that area. And thank you for correcting me. We're not going to consider it. We're going to let the general plan, general plan follow through with the sphere of influence as it's been submitted to LAFCO. And we're not going to consider any changes. And if that's what my motion is for, to let it ride the way it is, and we will not interfere with it until it's completed.
Okay, but I have a comment then. If, have we or have we not, ask LAFCO, can we move the plan along and ask for an amendment in conjunction with it? Or do we, as I asked at the beginning in my opening comments, or do we have to wait for everything to be approved? I don't know. I would look to Darrell, because Darrell, you're on most of those committees.
Yeah, like I said, I don't see why we have to limit anyone asking for information. That's just ludicrous.
Right. Can't make a sound decision yet until I have all the information in front of me. Maybe you guys do, but I don't. Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, and there was a second? Okay. No other, no further discussion? Call for the vote.
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No. Now, let me restate. I want the project to move forward, just like everyone else does. But I want to look at all aspects, you know? I don't think I need to restate because you guys all know how I feel. I've made my comments pretty clear. And I appreciate, one thing, at least, I believe we've kind of agreed that we disagree. And I do appreciate it. Got a little tense there a couple of times, but you know what? Overall, I appreciate council and the public being very respectful. And I really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So, did we have any other comments from public?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to make a motion now to ask for staff time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. As previously stated, I was just overjoyed that we didn't get into a scream and yell and fit. As previously stated, my direction is to ask city manager, appropriate staff, and I just ask one of the questions, you know, which I feel is very important. Can we ask LAFCO move the general plan along? Is, what is the amendment process? Can we do it in conjunction? Or does it, you know, mess everything up? I mean, we've asked these questions before.
I don't know whether this will save you time or not, but let me see if I can say this as succinctly as I can. And Kurt may correct me. I think we know as a staff that if the council wishes to change I think we know as a staff, that if the council wishes to change the general plan or the sphere of influence, that will generate additional studies, because LAFCO says that's changing the conditions that you have, and therefore, there will be new studies, new issues which you will have to address. If we don't, then you can continue the way you have presented it, because they are geared up to do that. So, by, if the council does take some additional action, it will create additional work and may extend the process to complete the general plan process.
But if I can chime in, I do not believe, I'm misunderstanding the mayor's question, 'cause I don't support what you just said, Ted. I do not believe the mayor's asking to interfere with the current one. It sounded like he's asking for some parallel or subsequent, but-
Yeah.
...the mayor has to speak for himself.
No, that's exactly what I'm asking.
Well, you must misunderstood it, Darrell. What I said was, if you do wish to change it, it will kick those things in. I didn't say that staff can go and say, can you do a parallel issue? That's something that Kurt will have to ask. What my comment was, is if you wish to change it, it will kick in additional studies.
And I believe we, or I do not, I can't speak for it, we do not wish to change it. I think it's a question of process. The mayor wants to understand a process subsequent to that.
Yes, I do, thank you. And maybe I'm not saying it right.
May, let me make a suggestion, that maybe you could meet with staff, a meeting, and then we could understand exactly more fully what it is you're asking, so that we could respond to it.
And with that said, and I respect that, you know, some of the council members may have some questions to direct over to you, too. Okay. So, at this point, we don't have a time when we could do that. I mean, I personally believe we need the information, you know, on the latest HCP. He indicated when he was Rick, sorry, he, he did indicate that he may have something on the amendment process when he was here on September fifteenth, and was that kinda what you understood? He made that comment maybe just to me. I said, I might have something, but maybe not.
Chapter ten, Kurt, have you guys talked about when that was gonna be ready for release?
Or a projection of when it was gonna be released.
I don't have the calendar in front of me. I can, I can give council a copy, or give you the information on what the calendar is. I can provide that.
And I'll call you, Ted, tomorrow to set up something. I appreciate it. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Can we, do we have other public comments?
Yes.
That took an hour. I'm gonna give a slide of fifteen minutes, okay?
Actually, I've never read the public comment statement yet.
Okay, well, we'll go into that. That's why I said other public comments.
I gotta find it. There's a paper there. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheets to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. Maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker.
Is John first one?
Absolutely not. Woody is first. Or did he leave?
No, he's there.
There he is.
Woody, and then-
Then John.
There's John on-
John?
John, you're up next. Okay.
Well, mine's gonna be a little lighter note. I just wanna report that I went to all the vendors today, to see if they're making money for the city and for themselves. About seventy-five percent said it's improving a lot. Every spot, I think, was full. Then on the Fourth of July, that went along real good. They all made money, even me. And the only bad thing, at nine forty-five, there was another fight. So, I think we had a dead end at, instead of twelve o'clock at ten, and we gotta keep the teenagers from getting the beer. Lot of them drunk, walking up and down the street with the paper cups. I don't know where they get it.
Were they at the flea market when you saw them?
Yeah, at the flea market on the street, when we were all set up. They were coming in, maybe that caused the fight. But the band stopped the fight, and then they yelled on the loudspeaker, then all of a sudden, the police came.
Oh.
And my last thing is, I don't want Ted to leave.
Oh.
I said, I don't want Ted to leave.
My hearing's gone, I'm getting old. I'm sorry.
I said, I don't want you to leave, and if you do, I want Jason to jump in your hole.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Flarback? John Flarback, I live in City Galt. Interesting night. I thought I was gonna get, be right up front to make my comments around after all the Darrell Clare and Andrew and Donald Haynes said they wouldn't do anything to stop the general plan. I'm kinda confused on that vote, because that's what that whole vote was for, so you can find something to try to change the general plan. So, I'm really confused on that. That wasn't what you said it was, but that's what you're after. To amend the general plan would extend the general plan process indefinitely and cost the city about a million dollars. Developer's not gonna pay for it, city's gonna pay for it. There really wasn't any reason to discuss modifying this SOI, because, like I said, had three votes that said they were gonna push it through. I would like to share with everyone here tonight some impacts to the wastewater treatment plant. This is what, one of the things that got me involved with the problems of the developing out there, is impacts to the wastewater treatment plant. These impacts are, I don't have them in any order of occurrence, they're just randomly picked. Number one, one million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars for modification, modifications to the storage reservoir, including improvements to fill eighteen and nineteen. The city is only allowed to discharge during the winter months to Laguna Creek. Summer month, land application is necessary. We had no land application, so we modified the storage reservoir to be able to continue to build homes through the summer months. And then the winter month, we could discharge the treated water in the Laguna Creek. That cost one million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. A million dollars for biosolids off hauling. Reason, no irrigation. We were running out of land for irrigation purposes, so we done away with the biosolids application and used the land for irrigation. About a million dollars for biosolids off hauling. That was number two impact. Number three, twenty-five thousand dollars for preparation and anticipation of lease with less fully property that never materialized, no agreement. This land would have eliminated the need for off haul of biosolids, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. They were so dire need of land that they went to the procedures of implementing the lease on that property, and they spent twenty-five thousand, and it never went through. That was number three. Number four, one half million dollars for legal expenses for failed attempt condemnation of eminent domain of the Roman Catholic Church property. This probably should've been right at the top of the list. This is in the order of occurrence. This here is where this problem first started, was our expense of eminent domain on the Catholic Church. That was about a half a million dollars. That was number four. Number five, the city probably has spent a million dollars for lease of the Roman Catholic Church property, land preparation, maintenance, upkeep, permits, groundwater monitoring, and so on. Purpose for this lease is so the city continued to build homes, and was paid for with residential sewer rate increases. Why wasn't this land paid for, this lease paid for with developer impact fees, connection fees? Number six, after the city's failed attempt to obtain the Roman Catholic Church property by eminent domain, the city spent four hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study for the purpose to find the best alternative for the city's wastewater problem. After the failed attempt to condemn the church property, no land, the city didn't know what to do, so they spent four hundred thousand dollars for West Joe's to go out and find seventeen possibilities, alternatives, and they eliminated, and we're right back where we were with, where we started. That was number six. Number seven, four hundred and eight thousand dollars in wastewater permit violations and fines, reservoir, the reservoir bond. This was caused mainly, most of these fines were caused by the modification to the storage reservoir. It's in the Galt, some of the website, it even explains that pretty well, about what caused most of these fines. Number eight, that was number seven. This is number eight, sixty thousand dollars to address the Jerry Slankard report for the Delver Greens project. The report suggested connecting Sacramento Regional Sanitation District, and West Joe's was involved, and they're expensive, about sixty thousand dollars for that. That was number eight. Number nine, seventy-nine thousand dollars, West Joe's engineering for pre-designed biosolids, and three million dollars for new construction of biosolids handling. This is right on, we're in the process of doing this now, this is number nine.
You, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Oh, well, thank you.
We gave you an extra thirty-one seconds, John, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maggie Campbell. Honorable Mayor, Council, my name is Maggie Campbell. I do not live in the city or county, although my, the jurisdiction that I work with is the Labor's International Union of North America, covers the entire state of California, Arizona, and New Mexico. I'm here tonight, I'm sure that in the past, when you guys have been approached by unions, they're in here to beat up on you or encourage you to do one thing or another. I'm here today to let you know that the times are different. In this economic time, we as a union understand that there are not a plethora of monies out there for you to be able to do the job that you need to do for your community and your constituents. We have, as the laborers' union, we've identified a need in working with many other awarding bodies, that there are understaffing issues with different local governments, and you don't have the time necessary to do the investigation on contractors and public contracts, or many other things. So, we want to assist you. So, I ask that, when the unions approach you in this new time and upcoming, just listen to what they have to offer you. Take the information, and I encourage you to take the time that you, that you can, to take a look at some of the information provided. Do some investigation and research if it's not already there for you, and make the best decision that you can. I encourage you to understand that when the union approaches, it doesn't always mean it's a union or non-union issue. It may just be an issue that we're trying to bring forward to your attention, for you, to assist you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
No.
I don't have any other public comment.
Okay.
Speaker sheet.
Well, well-
I have a different speaker sheet.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we've covered everyone?
Okay.
We can move on to the start of the business. Information consent calendar. We actually have three items. Okay. Okay.
First item, minutes of the special meeting of August the third, two thousand nine. Second item, City of Galt warrants. Third item, staff augmentation for Twin Cities Road slash State Route ninety-nine interchange project.
Do we have a motion?
A motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Next item, I guess we'll move, what, all the way down to, unless something's come up on communications or presentations, we'll go to regular calendar, city attorney's office?
City Council procedural guidelines, resolution, and ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you is a proposed draft of revised city council procedural guidelines, and this draft was put together, as you may recall, by an ad hoc committee of the council with the assistance of staff. And the document that you have, that you have before you is divided into basically four different sections. The first section of this document talks about the council powers, the selection of mayor and vice mayor, various functions of the mayor, as well as the council. The next section is the form of government, and this part of the procedural guidelines is intended to explain the relationship between the city manager, between the council, and between the staff. The next section, legal and ethical standards, is an item that is becoming more prevalent in city council guidelines, and what this section is intended to do, is it's intended to establish some of the ground rules as it relates to the relationships between council members and between council members and staff, and how the council desires for those relationships to be conducted. The last section of the council guidelines relates to council meetings, and this is a section that addresses some of the more traditional items, such as when your regular meetings are going to be held, order of your agenda, rules of procedure, and things of that nature. I wanna state that there's no obligation for the council to actually have council procedures. This document is really at your full discretion. It should reflect those items that the council feels needs to be addressed, that will help promote the smooth and orderly conduct of the city's business, and the smooth and orderly conduct of the council meetings as well. There's a couple of sections that I, that I do wanna call to your attention, and I might jump around a little bit. The first section that I wanna make you aware of is Section four point eight one, which is under that last section, and it's under rules of procedure. And what this section provides in the second sentence is basically that unless there's some other legal standards, that a simple majority of members present may take action on any ordinances or resolutions. So, what that means is that you are required to have a quorum to be in session. So, if there's three council members that are present to establish the quorum, then any item that's on your agenda could be passed by a two-to-one vote. When I was reviewing the rules tonight in preparation, I noticed that there was actually one sentence that we had included that makes that a little ambiguous, ambiguous. It's in one point two one, which is on the first page, and it says, "City policy shall be established by a majority vote of the full council." So, that would imply that you would need three of the five members to vote on any city policy. I think that's kind of ambiguous. So, what I would recommend is that if the council is comfortable with a simple majority vote on all items, that we take out that particular sentence in one point two one. If there are certain items that the council feels should only come before a full majority, so that there would always be three members to support it, then I think we ought to articulate what those items would be. The next section that I wanna draw to your attention is in four five, four point five point one. And there's been a, there's an established practice that city council members can place items on the agenda. And this rule is not intended to change that policy, but what it is intended to do, and it states, that council members may request items be placed on a future agenda at any public meeting. What it's intended to do is to establish a guideline, if the council so desires, establish a guideline that would require council members to place those items on an agenda at a preceding public meeting. The reason for this is, as discussed by the ad hoc committee, was so that if a member placed an item on an agenda, that there would be an opportunity for staff to work up that item, to prepare a staff report, as with other items on your agenda, and then the full council would have the benefit of that staff workup before the next meeting. So, I did wanna make that, that change, bring that particular change to your attention. The other, the next item I wanna call to your attention is in four point, it's actually in four point six one, and it's also, carries over into four point seven one, and it really deals with public comments portion of the agenda. And as you're aware, there's opportunities for members of the public to comment on any item on your agenda, and then there's an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. And what these two sections, both your order of items on the agenda, as well as four seven one, are intended to do, is to clarify that if a member of the public wishes to speak on an agenda item, that they hold that testimony and fill the- an agenda item, that they hold that testimony until the agenda item is called, and that the public comments section be used exclusively for public comments on non-agenda items. The reason for that is to establish a practice where we have all of the testimony relating to an agenda item received by the council in one block, so that you can hear it at the same time, question it, and deliberate on that testimony. The next item, and last item that I want to call to your attention, is in 4.89. And currently, in the event that your procedural rules do not address a particular issue, we default to Robert's Rules of Order. And what 4.89 proposes, that in situations where your rules do not address an issue, that we resort to an alternate publication, which is really almost a pamphlet, called Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And I've brought copies of that publication for the council this evening. It's about a four-page pamphlet that was established by a superior court judge several years ago. I think it was established at the time that he was on the Board of Supervisors in Yolo County, who was also previously on the Davis City Council. And what it was intended to do was to come up with some straightforward, common sense rules on dealing with procedural issues faced at a council meeting. Robert's Rules of Order, while it is oftentimes the default for city councils, was never intended to actually address city council meetings. It's intended to address a very broad spectrum of public meetings, and the bridge section, or the bridge version of that doc, of that book is about 300 pages, I think, at this, you know, at this point in time. So, that was the recommendation of the ad hoc committee that we use as a default, Rosenberg's Rules of Order. So, with those comments, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Councilmember Claire or the Vice Mayor have any comments, because they were the two members that were on the ad hoc committee.
We also just, she just reminded, Sue, sorry, reminded me we had two people from the public that wish to speak on this. So, just if you wanted to comment, or you want to wait for the public? Oh, I didn't know. No, he was asking.
I have no comment.
Daryl?
Just real quick, we, with Jason and staff and our city attorney and Barbara and I put, and Liz, I'm sorry, a lot of the work from Liz, put what we thought was the best things forward, especially commenting on that rules of order. The one we're proposing's been adopted by the League of Cities, and it's just much more doable. I think you could debate Robert's Rules of Order indefinitely and perhaps never reach a conclusion, and this one's just much easier to follow, I think. So, hopefully, the rest of the council sees some good in what we've proposed here, and again, it's a draft, and certainly, we're open to specific comments about specific items.
Okay. Does the council wish to hear from the public first?
Sure.
I mean, generally, that's what we do. Do we have two speakers?
Yes. The first is Rick Walters.
Rick Walters, I live in the City of Galt. After reviewing the new section 4.7, Communications from the Public, I have noticed a glaring inconsistency with the freedom to speak our minds. If I read section 4.7.5 correctly, it states that citizens will not be able to make statements or commentary towards city staff or city council in a way that they feel is inappropriate. This section also states that he or she or they can interrupt your speech at any time if they feel is objectionable, determined by 4.7.5 of the new guidelines. If you look at section 4.7.4, it says, "Members of the city council should not engage in debate with members of the public offering public comment. But, the very minute this council or staff interrupts the train of thought of a public speaker, you have in fact violated his or her rights." The Brown Act of 2007, number 54954.3(c), and I quote, "The legislative body of a local agency shall not prohibit public criticism of the policies, procedures, or services of the agency, or of the acts or omissions of the legislative body," end of quote. It appears to me that the intentions of this new section is meant to restrict free speech and to remove any and all negative policy references that relate to our council and staff. With regards to Resolution Number 2002-104, the procedural guidelines that we now use, our freedom of expression is maintained at a much higher level than what you are proposing in this new section. I have never in my entire life seen such a lack of respect and a condescending attitude directed to the citizens of Galt as this new section indicates. Your whole theme of this new section is to scold us as if we were little children who do not understand proper decorum. It also appears that our freedom to express ourselves is slowly being eroded away by procedural guidelines. Nowhere does it say in our constitution that procedural guidelines is a dominant factor in freedom of speech. If you insert this new section into our guidelines for public comment, what will prevent this council or future councils from eliminating select parts of a public comment or the verbiage because it is sensitive in nature to some of you in the government? I would like to remind everyone that a tape of the council meeting will be the true and only historical document of the meeting that shows whether freedom of speech has been violated or proper decorum has not been followed. We do not need a section in the handbook to explain our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Next speaker.
Jerry Stripling.
Mayor, before the next item and speaker comes up, if I could just... First, I'd like to point out that the section that Mr. Walters read from the Brown Act is actually in your proposed rules, and it's in Force 7.6. Says nothing in this section shall prohibit or discourage orderly criticism of any city council decision or city policy, procedure, program, or service. What 4.7.5 was intended to do was to establish that the meetings of this body are intended to be cordial, professional, and productive, and that the same conduct that you ask of each other, you would also ask of the public. And when somebody stands up and is belligerent, obliterant, threatening, or abusive, then it creates a, an environment that is counterproductive to receiving the information that they are, they're supposedly there to deliver. It causes other members to be concerned about their own safety. And so, the mayor, as well as the council, has the right, as well as an obligation, to maintain order during its public meeting, and 4.7.5 is intended only to do that, but not in any way to restrict the content of the message or the testimony that people provide to you.
Jerry?
Yes, my name's Jerry Stripling. You guys all know me. Anyway, I'd like the city clerk to read 4.7.5, if you would, so the council or people in the audience understand what they're really talking about. If you don't mind, you can read better than I do.
"The city council shall not tolerate persons who make any belligerent, personal, slanderous, threatening, or abusive remark, statement, or commentary toward the city council, city staff, or other individuals, or conducts himself/herself in a manner which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. Any violation of this rule shall be grounds for terminating the speaker's comment period. Continued inappropriate behavior or comments, after having been directed to discontinue, shall be grounds for removal from the meeting."
Thank you. Appreciate that. Like the lawyer, I do respect your views and stuff, but you speak in a lot better language and maybe have a lot more poison than I do. I say something to council, I am, when I hear myself talk, I'm a lot more gruff than I think I am. I don't mean it. This would give the council the opportunity to send me off or somebody else that can't speak as good as everybody else. They hate this microphone. They're very intimidated by coming up here. I think this should be taken out of it. I don't agree with 4.7.5. That comment should be left to the, deras, or up to council, but not mandatory. Somebody, you know, I speak forward. I say what's on my mind. I get in trouble a lot of times for saying what's on my mind. I don't mean to be gruff, and other people stepping up here. I've been up here a number of times, so I've been able to speak a little bit better. I'm not the best at it, but this should come out of there, as far as I'm concerned. When you start limiting what a person could say, to one person, it might be offensive to the next guy, it's not, because I have a lot of things that are, that I say that might be offensive to people that are a little bit thinner skin than I do, I am, but I'd like to see that taken out of this. This is, I picked this up today, first time I was able to see it. I read it, and this is the only thing I've circled in there that I think should come out of it. If not, and somebody gets kicked out of here, you'll have the American Civil Liberties Union, or somebody else could possibly come in here for impair, or bothering a person's rights, I should say. I'd like to see that part taken out, and that's all I'd like to see. If there's one person on this council that's thin-hided, they can object to what I say and cut me off. I don't think that should be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
That's it? What do you allow, Mr. Baldwin?
Can you please allow me? I know, I know. Al Baldwin, I'm going to tell you, I love what you just said about this. I'll tell you, I've heard threats in this council, and I've heard people even cuss at the council, and I've heard people tell council members, "If you do this, I am going to go and do this, and you'll find out how it's going to..." It was a threat, a tone, a negative, and if you feel that that's a threat, or you're losing control by this person, then I think you have all the right in the world to cut them off and stop them. I think it's only right, no matter who it is, even me. So, just thought I'd throw that out. I think it's a great addition to it. If not addition, it was there before. I didn't read it. So, I'm for it.
Thank you, Al. That's all the questions? I'll ask for comments from council members?
Well, if I can touch on the item that's under discussion right now.
Yes.
I certainly don't support anything that infringes the First Amendment or people's rights to speech, but we have things in place. You can't go in an airport and start saying, "I'm going to blow up the airplane." We've decided that that's too disruptive to all the passengers on the plane for you to be allowed on there with them and start saying things like that. You can't stand in a movie theater and start screaming "Fire!" in the middle of the movie. So, any more than our city council meetings, there is conduct and decorum that is such that it's not allowed, and I can remember one individual came in, a lot of profanity, threw something at the city council, and obviously, that needed to be dealt with. So, this isn't intended for stopping Mr. Walters, as he said, or anyone else from expressing their views, or saying, "If you vote for something, I'll never vote for you," or "I'll try and get you off the council," or, this is for conduct well beyond that. And so, if there's any misunderstanding, I want to clear that up, that that isn't what we're proposing. But, we cannot conduct the city's business if an individual is so disruptive, and in my seven years, I can only think of two people who've ever had to be removed from a city council meeting, and those of us who recall a city council member who was shot recently at a council meeting are sadly aware that things can get out of hand, and it's our job to make sure they don't escalate to that point and protect the staff, the council, and the public from someone who's truly that disruptive to the process.
I've got a couple of comments. I think it's very clear, because of the two sections that are in there, that we're not trying to limit what you say, whether it's criticism or agreement. I think one of the things that we want to do is preserve the safety of the council. Where someone might get out of hand, it can offend somebody else, and before you know it, there can be reprisals. The other thing that I've always wanted to do is preserve as much as possible the dignity of our city council, because it reflects on how people look at our city. I know oftentimes, we have high school students sitting in the audience, and I think, I think we need to remember that. I think we, when we're representing the city, that we want to put our best foot forward. Again, I would say, you know, I don't think any of you have been restricted from any kind of criticism that you want to put forward, and I don't see that happening in the future. I know I've sat up here and listened to a lot of it, and that's just part of my job. So, I can assure you, we're not trying to keep you from expressing your opinion, good, bad, or indifferent.
Okay. Thank you. Don, any comments?
I was just going over some of this. First of all, I want to thank Barbara and Daryl for putting the effort toward going over this. You want to discuss this as a whole, or one issue at a time?
I believe, was that the intent, or were you just presenting this to us and then bringing it back?
Well, I think it's at the council's pleasure. I know that it's a very large document, and if there's a need to take more time to digest it, I understand that. If there's a need for staff to meet individually with council members to discuss their questions, happy to do that, or we can deal with questions tonight, whatever the council's pleasure is.
And then, Don, if I could just, you, attorney, sorry, Steve, you mentioned you had a four-page document, too, and if I haven't, I don't see it.
Oh, I have it in the...
Oh, okay. Sorry, Don. Go ahead.
That's all right.
If I could mention, I would hope that the council would take a little more time, because there is a lot of information represented here, and we just wanted to get it in front of you, show you the work we've done to date, get your feedback on it, and then go from there. At some point, we want to adopt it. It can always be amended if we find something, but a lot of what's in here is bringing our procedures up to date based on either case law or new information that's come out from the League of Cities and others, just to give us the most effective and professional way to carry out our work.
Okay. Don, sorry, now, after you've interrupted us.
Not a problem. Well, like I said, I want to thank Daryl and Barbara for the effort they put forth. There's some good things in here that I really like overall, and I'm glad that we're kind of getting something out that's sketched out. One of the things I don't want to do is, I do not want to infringe on people's ability to speak, and at the same time, I think people should be respectful, too. Having gone through this, I had some questions. One of the things is, one of the things I'd like to see in here, and I, and just so you know, I had sat down and went over these questions with Jason before coming to the meeting, so I got a lot of my questions answered. I want to thank Jason for that time. But what I was thinking, one of the other things I'd like to see included in here, something to the effect that there should be some statement in here that prohibits any council member from meeting with any party which the city is engaged in a current lawsuit or a negotiation directly, in negotiations which have been directed by council majority without, you know, without council's approval and without staff present. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that if we're in a legal lawsuit, or if we're in some sort of negotiations on a deal, I don't think a council member, without the direction from council as a whole, should be meeting with those individuals.
I agree with you.
And I think there should be something in there to that effect. I know it just seems like common sense, but I think I'd like to see it in there nonetheless. And I think it would be nice to have some clarity on that issue.
I would turn to the attorney for that.
Um, and I think it would be nice to have some clarity on that issue.
I would turn to the attorney for that. Well, I have several comments too, but I think you did too.
I do, yes. The first, uh, issue that I wanted to talk about was item one point three point one, which is the selection of the mayor. Um, it currently reads, let me go up to it. Currently reads, the election of the mayor and vice mayor shall occur at the city council meeting after the certification of the statewide general election in even numbered years. Unless removed from office by the city council, the mayor and vice mayor shall serve a two-year term. No council member shall serve consecutive terms as mayor. I was pretty open about this over the last two years, that I believe the, the position of mayor should be a one-year rotating position. I think, uh, Vice Mayor Payne, she's been on the council now for fi- almost five years, deserves the opportunity in December to be appointed to the position of mayor. And I, I would like to see the, uh, the wording in this, in this actually change to, to reflect the opportunity for that to, to come to fruition. That was one issue. Also, under four point six, which is the actual, uh, agenda guideline, we've omitted the term silent prayer from our, uh, from our agenda. And hopefully, that's just, uh, that was just an oversight, that that, that wasn't something that we did intentionally. I do think that that should be something that's, that's listed on our order of agenda. In light of, uh, mounting litigation across the country, I would suggest that it reads, uh, moment of silent, non-denominational prayer.
Go ahead, they're written down, either or, silent prayer or, or a moment of silence.
And then on four point seven point five, which is the section that has been brought up by two members of the community, I think we need to look at, at ways to make this less broad in its application. I, I agree that the intent is not to, to discourage public comment or public scrutiny. But I think some of the words that we use, like personal, um, abusive, they're just, they're open for so much interpretation. I would think that we would have, uh, we would have comments in there like threatening racist or, uh, offensive. So, maybe we could do some wordsmithing on that actual item and, and make it less broad so that it's easier to interpret by the council. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Well, I'd like a little bit of time to review it and review this document, but bring it back, that's my opinion. I mean, I've not looked at every item and I'd like to have that opportunity to review it.
Can, can I pick up another area that I want to mention, would you mind?
Yeah.
Do you want to finish?
No, this is, and this is why I think we ought to just review it and bring it back.
And I agree and I like that we're doing this. One point five point one two. Here it says, committee members serve at the pleasure of the city council, may be removed at any time by a majority vote at the city council. Committee members may resign at any time by submitting a written resignation to the city clerk. Resignations are effective upon submittal. And it, it's always been my understanding is that when we have committees, that each member appoints their own appointee. So, I'm on Claris why a majority could vote out somebody that I appoint. I just, it just seems like there's a conflict there of issue. Uh, so if I can get some clarity on that or if we could relook at that, I'd like to do that. Cause if we appoint somebody, I don't think a majority should be able to come in behind us and vote them out because they don't like them. And I don't think that would be fair to any council member.
I can't remember if that was already in there or, uh, what the discussion was regarding that. Do you, Steve?
I don't, uh, I, I'm looking for the section, the current rules, and I don't find it. Um, I will tell you that it is, um, very typical, even in situations where, uh, members are appointed by individual council members, such as planning commissions, that once the appointment is made, they serve at the pleasure of the full council and can be removed by a ma- a, a majority vote. Now, it does not have to be that way, it's not a state law situation, it's a, it's a local, uh, decision. So, if the council feels like they do not want the full council to have a say, that they, the members do not serve at the pleasure of the council, but serve at the pleasure of the appointing member, we can certainly change the rules to, uh, to reflect that.
I think it can, if we're gonna bring this back, it could be considered.
Could we, I'd like to look at that.
So, if we're bringing it back, can we, uh, can we bring each of the items that we've raised tonight back as a separate motion on that agenda? So, we cover them all individually?
Yes, I think we certainly can do that. And I, I think that in the, in the intervening time, if there's any other comments that other members have, if you wanted to just send those sections to me, then I can add it to a, a list and we can step through the issues and get, uh, council direction on, uh, on each issue.
I think it was expected that we would be presenting it tonight for the full council to look at and amend our next suggestions.
Okay. Can I also make another suggestion?
Sure.
Um, one point four point four. It's, you know, it's, uh, it kind of goes hand in hand maybe with one point four point two. But in one point four point four, it says proclamation shall be adopted by the city council, signed by the mayor. Council members, council members may individually sign and present certificates at special events they attend, but may not present individual certificates during a city council meeting. And it just seems like in the past, we've allowed that. Barbara, you've done many individual certificates on your own.
I think what we were trying to do was to, um, distinguish between a proclamation and, uh, just a, I don't mean just a certificate, but a certificate. Proclamations are a little more, um, up there, you know what I mean? They're a little more important. Go ahead, Steve.
I, you know, I may not remember all of the discussion on this, but I think what the, what the discussion surrounded or turned on is that during the city council meeting, the committee felt that only items that are brought forward by the, the full body should occur or be handled at a city council meeting. And if there were individual items that council members wanted to undertake, such as presenting certificates, that it ought to be done in a, in a forum other than in the middle of a city council meeting.
You're right. Did that not sit well with you? You want to change that?
Do we mean that community, uh, serviced organizations can no longer make presentations before the city council?
I think that's what that's saying.
Okay.
Isn't that what that's saying, Steve?
Well, I, I, if I interject, I don't think that's what we're saying. I think we're trying to go more to process. A procl- proclamation is by definition enacted by a full vote of the council. A certificate of appreciation can be from a civic group or an individual council member. Uh, and the two are just procedurally two different things, any more than, um, the community of character, we as a council don't vote, that's something they're doing.
So, you're saying that if it's a proclamation?
Take the majority of the council.
Right, we're all, we, those that we sign.
Wherever that proclamation is.
Then the presentation would be handled by the mayor. But any certificate of appreciation would pretty much be handled by any individual and, and or group.
Yeah, and I think more appropriately because since I've been the mayor, there, there's been, you know, this has happened and Barbara's asked me and I said, well, you know, you know more about it as an example and I would prefer that you did it, you know.
Okay, we can certainly change that or clarify it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anything else? We might come up with other items, you know, in the next few days, so. Do we want to bring this back? Rather than review this right now?
Yes, I would recommend to council that we bring this back at a later date.
I agree.
Okay. Do we have a date set forward or the next council meeting or do you want to?
Whatever's the pleasure of council.
Pardon me?
Whatever's the pleasure of the council.
Right, that's why I'm asking, pleasure of council. You want to, I figure we might need a week or two just to review it and come up with extra comments and questions.
I do like the idea of having this, by the way.
Oh, you do?
The fact that we have it, I like that, because I think it brings organizations to the meetings a little bit more. So, not that we don't have those, but I do like some of the, uh, guidelines there.
To council meetings?
Uh, I, I think we should just say in a timely manner, I, I don't want to tie the city attorney or the subcommittee's hands, so.
In a timely manner, okay. Got direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item.
Community Development Department Property Abatement Fund.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, uh, the item for tonight is a request for funds. As you are aware, um, there, uh, have been an increasing number of foreclosures in the city, uh, which has led to improper maintenance of properties. Um, we have, uh, addressed them, um, consistently, um, but are running into issues associated with having to go in on the property. And these are individual residential properties where property owners left, properties are un- not maintained. We've had cases where fences have fallen, um, providing access, we wouldn't want that if there's a swimming pool that had water back there. So, these monies would be used to, one, to secure property if necessary, two, to abu- abate them when there is a, a fire hazard, at least this time of year. Um, and there are instances where we have neighborhoods who, uh, when you have, you know, grass or weeds that are six feet high, and we've had that case, um, where i- it's a blight on the neighborhood. So, these funds are intended to be used for that purpose. Uh, we've kind of outlined and you have an attachment as to the procedures. We believe that in certain cases, uh, we can do, um, very short notifications, but generally, you're looking at a process of, uh, anywhere from probably twenty to forty-five days at the outside in order to, to be effective. So, even though an individual makes a complaint or we receive complaints and we investigate it, we still have the due process to go through in order to find, or attempt to find the property owner, and that's one of the problems, that, uh, oftentimes you simply do not get a response because either we don't know who the property owner is, or the property owner on record no longer owns it, it belongs to some bank. And we have to make at least some attempt to, uh, provide an address, send notice. Once that notice is gone, uh, unresponded to, then we can proceed with, uh, abatements after following necessary procedures. Um, we believe that, um, this will be a continuing problem, at least through the rest of this fiscal year. Um, in the spring, uh, depending on how much rain we get, uh, we may be addressing this again next year. I believe these funds will carry us, uh, through the fiscal year. Uh, but we are requesting, uh, the ability to engage, uh, a contractor, and that could be an existing city contractor to, to perform those abatement, uh, activities.
Would that mean like cutting the grass, fixing the fence?
Yes, yes.
We would still be the ones that would, uh, go out and inspect them and everything?
Sure, we, we would ensure that the work is done, be done in compliance. There's also noted in the staff report, staff will make all attempts to recover monies through a lien process, but we cannot guarantee that particularly if these properties are in foreclosure. Uh, we may not be able to execute that, uh, the way we'd like to.
Why are we talking about, uh, fire abatement issues when the CSD actually has that jurisdiction?
The fire district is, is taking the position they deal mainly with vacant properties. Um, they're gonna be in the same position as we are on these foreclosed properties, um, in, in terms of the ability to secure reimbursement. Um, they have, uh, indicated that their jurisdiction does not go to that, that, that is city responsibility and that they will address the vacant properties for fire life safety issues. This is more, this includes, could include fire life safety, but we are looking at nuisance abatement rather than a strict fire life safety issue.
But we're talking about foreclosed homes, which are theoretically vacant properties?
Correct.
So, that is their jurisdiction?
Um, well, they're not, well, they're, um, vacant to the extent there is no building improvements. Um, and I think they make a distinction between property maintenance and safety.
The other thing I would point out, this has come up, um, they usually just do that during the time of the year when there is a fire hazard, but
Correct.
there are homes that, um, in other times of the year, January, February, where the weeds get tall and it's not addressed unless it's done by the city at this point.
Each, if I could just comment, each fire district handles this issue a little differently. And obvious, apparently, they do not handle it right now. You know, and it seems to be some question about it. But a lot of districts do do it and they look at it all year round.
The Gulf Fire Protection District, before we merged with the CSD, was it their philosophy that, that they followed the same guidelines that the CSD is following now? They wouldn't, wouldn't go onto properties where there were structures in place?
I can't honestly answer that question, Don, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know with certainty.
We all know, I, we've driven through this community, uh, there's, there's a lot of vacant foreclosed homes in our neighborhoods. And twenty thousand dollars, to me, it's like throwing a water balloon at a raging inferno, it's not gonna make much of a difference. So, how are we going to prioritize what they're gonna work on? Are they gonna take direction from, from you or are we leaving that to code enforcement? We tell them we want them to.
It'll be through our, our department, ultimately, um, those properties where we determine that it is, uh, in the community's best interest to abate, we will abate. Um, th- these would be ones, again, um, the ones we have been addressing are those that you have a front yard at a minimum that probably has five or six feet of weeds. I, I, I've seen them where you cannot see the front doors or the front of that building. Um, those we would most likely and would abate. Others, uh, if they're marginal, uh, and it's simply, you know, some high dead weeds and brown lawns, we're not gonna go in and abate that. If the building is secure, uh, the fences are intact, um, we'll probably just let it slide. I mean, they will be posted, um, for property maintenance, but we would not move to abate.
We've never done this before, ever. Our code enforcement has never actually gone out and contracted, uh?
Yes, they have. In, in the past, they have. On health and safety issues, yes, they have. Uh, we've had, uh, if you remember, several years ago, we had some very bad windstorms. Vacant properties that did have swimming pools in the back, we had fences down, we replaced those fences.
Okay. My fear is that, once the money's gone, there'll still be an expectation from the community to follow through on a project that we've just funded. And with, with the amount of foreclosed homes that we know we have in this community and the fact that our unemployment rate has gone up by seventy-nine percent in the last year, the likelihood that we're gonna have more foreclosed homes in the community is, is pretty evident. I, I have a fear that the community's gonna expect us to follow through on this project and we're gonna be throwing money out of the general fund at it indefinitely.
Well, this is a policy matter to the extent that, that, um, council does not have to fund this. Um, we receive a lot of calls and I'm certain some of you have received calls. Um, I believe in those areas where it is a safety issue, I think we should address it.
Aren't we currently doing something about them?
Um, we've done several properties so far. We had no funding, we got the cooperation of, of Parks and Rec, they were able to address those properties through their contractor. So, there is a cost, but, but it was a cost in a different department, that's what precipitated this report to council for your consideration.
So, are these properties where there's a foreclosure or the house is up for sale, so there is not an agent, there's not a lender, there's no bank representative that holds the papers that would be responsible? I'm just asking.
Um, we, uh,
Somebody's got.
In those cases where there is
Yes, they are.
where there is no real estate sign. If there's a real estate sign, it makes it a lot easier. But if there's no real estate sign, there's nothing to indicate that somebody's taking ownership, we go to the assessor's office and we track down the information as best we can. But a lot of times, you know, the address of, of the record owner is the property and obviously, that property owner is not there. We don't have a forwarding address, so we get stymied. Um, we don't have a lot of time to do the research and it takes a great deal of research to find out who hold, who's the mortgage holder or who is getting this property due to a foreclosure.
Well, you're right, it does take time. I, I know a couple of people that do spend a lot of time doing that. And, uh, but the, the end result is you, you'll end up getting about a eighty to ninety percent turnaround is what you'll end up getting.
If we can get ahold of a property owner and we let them know what we're doing, oftentimes that helps. You're correct.
Right.
We're also talking in the, uh, in the discussion on this agenda item, actually in the packet, about giving the code enforcement official the authority to sign contracts to, to mitigate the, the. about giving the code enforcement official the authority to sign contracts to mitigate the abatement issues on the property. To what extent would he be allowed to sign contracts? If he's signing contracts to put a fence back up, aren't we bound by prevailing wage law for contributing public funds to get that accomplished?
I would, whatever process is required would be followed. But the point here is that we would establish a list of qualified contractors, and then utilize them on a case-by-case basis. And I don't know that on this type of work effort, that prevailing wage is a requirement.
Well, it depends on what type of work that they're doing.
Correct. Fixing a fence, I don't know, or mowing weeds requires prevailing wage. I don't believe so, but I, we can check.
I think we need to check.
Make sure.
Certainly. I think we need a little further information.
So, the question is, does any of this type of work require prevailing wage?
I think that's one, but I had, my question would be then, that whom is responsible? You know, I mean, I know you probably are, but, you know, what's the numbers we're talking about? Are we talking three or four homes? We're talking twenty-five homes?
We've identified twenty to thirty homes in the community, as indicated in the staff report, that could potentially fall into this.
Yeah, I was trying to find that, and I was asking you.
Twenty to thirty, yeah, okay.
And I would add, that is a huge issue in the community. I know Kurt and Rusty get a lot of
Every day.
calls on this, so I support his trying to take care of the community and answer their desires, and even bringing this forward. Thank you for doing that.
Daryl, did you have any comments?
I'm kind of hesitant, given all our budget issues and everything else, and agree with what Andrew said, that, you know, once you start it, where do you stop, and when you do stop? You know, these are privately held properties. I don't like the eyesore that they are, but I am hesitant to spend the city's money on it. So, you know, it's not a big deal for me one way or another, but I think I'd lean to not going with the proposal. I appreciate the intent of the proposal, but I just, I think we have other things that our funds maybe ought to be directed to. Hopefully, in many cases, and I know it's private property and all the other things, but hopefully, in many cases, someone who lives next door to the property will deal with it. And if they don't, you don't. No, 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 that's not what I was implying.
If there's no further questions, what's the direction from council?
I think we're asking for some more information, aren't we?
Okay, that's where we're going, but I just, okay. So, you have a timeframe of when to bring it back?
I could probably get it back if I can get clarification. Mayor Shelton, did you have any specific questions as well?
Not just those ones, just that one?
Regarding the prevailing wage?
Well, part of the prevailing wage, but I know, I'm ninety-eight percent positive that someone, there's a lender, a banker that's responsible for that.
Oh, absolutely. There's someone who's responsible. It's the ability to track that person down, and that really is the question.
Okay.
Thank you, Kurt.
When we're going to bring this back?
I'll probably have it back by next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, it's tabled. Next item.
Public Works Department Award of Bid for the Central Galt Interchange Building Demolition Project.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the council. Recommendation is that the council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the Central Galt Building Demolition Project. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Pantano Excavating, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Where also asks to authorize me, as the Rep. Public Works, to accept the demolition improvements when completed, and issue the notice of completion upon finishing the work. This is the award of a contract for demolition services on three residential properties and the old high school bus barn as part of the interchange project. Bids are open back on July twenty-third. We had ten contractors submit bids ranging from sixty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars up to two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We've included a summary in your agenda report. Recommendation toward the contract to Pantano Excavating was included on the agenda for the August third meeting. About two hours before the close of business on August third, I received a protest in West Coast Environmental, the second low bidder. I believe this protest also went to council. The protest claimed that there were five items that needed to be included with the bid that were not, and therefore, the bid should be ruled non-responsive. Due to the short time, if you go back and double-check that, I had it pulled from the agenda. A copy of the protest, I thought it was included in the agenda package. We have since gone back and looked over all the five items, and have them all resolved. There were items, two letters, that were not included in the submitted bid package. The specifications said that they should have been submitted with the package, or within four days, and they were not. There was, however, secondary language that indicated if the bidder signed the bid proposal, it was the same as incorporating that language into the bid. So, the city attorney has ruled that, since that language is there, there was no need to separate those, submit those two separate forms. In light of this, staff reconfirms that Pantano is the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and recommends award of the contract accordingly.
And just for clarification purposes, at the last council meeting, I asked Public Works Director Greg Halliday whether or not this contractor had a current asbestos certification. I had looked the number up and wasn't able to find it, and he has since informed me that they do have a current asbestos certification.
Subconsultant for that work.
Any other discussion on that?
No.
Is there a motion?
I would, before you entertain a motion, Madam Vice Mayor, I'd ask for a public testimony, if there's any.
Is there any public comment on this? Do we need to open it for a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing. I just wanted to see if there's any public testimony.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, next item.
This is also Public Works, Award of Bid for the Construction of the Two Thousand Nine Waterline Replacement Project.
Yes, this is the first of four possible recommendations or actions by council. The first is that the council discusses and acts on a motion for reconsideration of the contract award to CAT Construction for construction of the Two Thousand Nine Waterline Improvement Project. If that motion is approved, then we're asking that council conduct a hearing of responsibility and a responsiveness for CAT Construction, as you consider a rescission of the contract award to CAT Construction. And lastly, possibly authorize the city manager to execute a contract to construct the project to DA Wood Construction, the second low bidder, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. We give a little background on this. On July twenty-third, staff opened bids for this waterline replacement project. The low bidder was CAT Construction, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand sixty dollars. Staff checked the required bid documents for responsiveness, including the proposal, the experience, subcontractor's addenda, and bid bond. We determined the bid to be responsive. We called the references and checked them. We summarized CAT was competent to perform the work, and a recommendation toward the contract to CAT Construction was included on the consent calendar for the August third meeting. On July twenty-seventh, before that happened, the Foundation for Fair Contracting called Public Works and asked about how we protested the bond, the bid. We requested that they provide their protest in writing, setting the grounds for the protest. On August third, Public Works staff received an email request from the Northern California District Council Laborers International Union, also requesting a copy of the bid policy, of the protest policy, which we actually have no form of protest policy. They were informed of that, and both the labor union and the FCC were invited to come to the council meeting on the third and express their concerns directly to the council. Just right at the close of business on August third, we did receive a protest from FCC, the email went to staff and council, claiming that CAT Construction bid was non-responsive, requesting the contract be awarded to the next low bidder. They also provided a package of documents in support of their claim. A copy of that protest was included in your agenda report. In the limited time that we had to look it over, my staff and I reviewed the submitted documents, and disagreed with their contention that the bid was non-responsive. None of the submitted documents supported the charge of non-responsive. In staff's opinion, the information was not sufficient so as to warrant a finding that CAT Construction was not responsible, or it otherwise indicate that they would not perform their contract obligations. In staff, we considered the contract without merit, and felt no action was warranted, and we let it remain on the consent calendar. At the August third meeting, the council unanimously voted to approve the consent calendar, which included the award of the contract to CAT Construction. The labor union, last Friday, provided some additional information. That was too late to be included in the agenda report, and I passed that out to you tonight. Again, a bit of a procedure. The first issue before you tonight is a request from Councilmember Meredith for a motion for reconsideration of the contract to award to CAT Construction. In order for council to conduct a hearing of responsibility, it must first determine if there is majority support for a motion for reconsideration. In the absence of such majority support, the remaining recommendations in the agenda report are moved. If there is majority support, then the council may wish to move into a hearing of responsibility, and the other recommendations as included. Lastly, if the council decides that there is sufficient grounds for a rescension of the contract, Public Works is asking that they authorize the city manager to move forward with the award of a contract to the second low bidder, because of the need to expedite completion of the project. I do know that representatives from CAT Construction and the labor union are here tonight, and at that point, I would turn over to council.
I'll ask for counsel.
I have one, just briefly, before we get started. We just heard about a contract that we voted on right before this item, that was pulled off of the agenda because of a bid protest that was received. I've already had this conversation with Greg, and I hope it's the direction of the entire council, that when we do receive a bid protest, regardless of whether staff believes it has merit, it's brought to the city council's attention and addressed separately from the consent calendar. I think it's important for us to know any issues that are brought forward. So, if council agrees, I'd really like to provide that direction.
Are you saying for future?
For future. When we receive a bid protest, I think council should be made aware of it before we vote.
I would wonder if we would need to put a timeframe on that, like, we must get protests within twenty-four hours of being able to vote, or two days, or something?
We should get it, as soon as they get it. I would hope that we would get it, yeah, within a twenty-four hour period.
I think more appropriate is to refer that to leave our term.
And councilmembers, Greg and I have discussed this, and we both think that the city's better served by having a more formal policy. And so, what I recommend is that Greg and I work together to prepare a policy, and then bring it back forward to council for consideration. And probably what we would do is that policy would be incorporated into our bid spec, so that that process would be the part of every bid that we solicit in the future.
I think it's a good idea.
I think there was also confusion based on the fact that this meeting was held on a Monday instead of a regular Tuesday meeting, so... Maybe that's why there was a time issue. In regards to the hearing of responsibility, Greg, I want to read to you a section from the Public Contracts Code. Eleven zero-three defines a responsible bidder as, used in this part, means a bidder who has demonstrated the attribute of trustworthiness, as well as quality, fitness, capacity, and experience to satisfactorily perform the public works contract. The legislature finds and declares that this section is declaratory of existing law. This is absolute genuine that we're reading here, is that correct? Is that your understanding of public contract?
I can't cite its chapter and verse from memory, but I believe that's reasonably close to it. My understanding is yes.
So, we could basically find a bidder unresponsible if they've demonstrated any past issues that would affect the trustworthiness, quality, fitness, capacity, or experience of the contractor. Is that correct?
I'd not qualify to answer that question. There's way too many questions about ramifications, the degree to which that is. And I think more of a legal question than that, where I feel I can answer.
Maybe the city attorney can clarify.
Councilmember Meredith, I think that is the definition, as I recall it, but I think that it goes on to say that the last part of the sentence is, has it affects the ability of the contractor to perform the project? And so, it's not that the contractor is not trustworthy in the abstract. It all relates to whether or not there is information that would lead the council to believe that they cannot perform the job because they are not qualified, because they have exhibited in the past evidence that they are not trustworthy in the sense of not being able to perform and complete the job. And the requirement, when it's a pre-award situation, is that there be substantial evidence to support that finding by the public agency. And so, what substantial evidence means in this context is that it basically needs to be strong and compelling evidence before the council that this contractor, or in any case, that we're dealing with responsibility, would not be able or qualified to complete the project that we are considering to retain them for.
Thank you. I'd be open to hearing from the public, that's council's desire.
Any other comments, Daryl? Otherwise, we'll go to any public comments.
No, listen to public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that, as a point of order, before we entertain any public comment, the first item that the council needs to consider is whether or not they want to reconsider the award from the last meeting. Unless there is public comment on that item, then my recommendation is that the council decide whether they wish to reconsider the award that already has been made. If there's council, if there's a motion that passes to open the reconsideration, then we would move into the substantive review of the award from the last meeting.
So, for procedural purposes, I will make a motion that we reconsider the contract award to CAT Construction for construction of the Two Thousand and Nine Waterline Replacement Project.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Can I ask, I guess procedurally, is there supporting evidence that the council has to reopen this, or the staff?
Well, we've all been provided the same information, Councilman Clare. The history of OSHA violations, lawsuits, civil judgments, companies that have been walked away from. I mean, we've all got the same information in front of us, so...
I think there's reasonable information here to say that it's questionable, most certainly.
I don't know whether Daryl has that. Do you have a?
No, I do. So, I just want to be clear. The motion that's before us is based on that information you're asking to open for reconsideration.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further comments or discussion? There are none. I'll call for the vote.
I'm not sure what we're voting on. Would you repeat your, someone repeat the motion here?
I moved that we reconsider the contract award to CAT Construction for construction of the Two Thousand and Nine Waterline Replacement Project.
And this has already been awarded, so I'm just going to say no.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
No. The next item on that.
So, that basically wiped out that agenda item, so I just wanted to make a few closing comments. I think the fact that we received all of this information is a pretty good indication that the City of Galt needs pre-qualification language for contracts to go out to bid in the city. We've just awarded a contract, and We've just awarded a contract, and reauthorized the contract, to a contractor that has a history of worker safety violations, lawsuits, and project complaints. The time is now to enact pre-qualification language before we start taking on huge projects like the Central Gulf Interchange, that will have major ramifications to the taxpayers of this city. Thank you.
Okay.
May I make a statement as well?
Sure.
I think that one of the red flags here should have been under the DB, uh, Better Business Bureau ratings, when they got a rating of an F, we should have been looking a little further at this. I'm not trying to challenge what you've done, or, but I have to agree with Andrew, we need some sort of process in which, when we're looking at these contracts and reviewing them.
Okay, we will now, uh, adjourn to the redevelopment agency. I could have the draw call, please?
Board members Payne, here, Claire.
Yep.
Payne.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here. Other comments? None?
That's correct.
Information consent agenda items, we have two items.
Move to approve.
I'll second. Hang on a second.
It was the minutes of August the third and redevelopment agents.
Yeah, I know.
No further discussion? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. We will adjourn and reconvene to the Gulf City Council. Uh, do we have any city clerks report?
Uh, I would just mention that, uh, there's a beautification committee meeting this Thursday, August the twentieth. At, uh, three-thirty in the City Hall Community Room. And, uh, meeting of the Commission on Aging on August the twenty-seventh, at five fifteen, at, uh, six-ten Shola. And that takes us to the next council meeting.
One, okay. Comments by staff, Ted?
I have none unless staff has.
I have one, and one of the council, the Councilmember Payne, myself, and the city engineer attended the special Missouri meeting last week, where they voted on the new plan, the revised plan, which is a, an attempt to deal with the, the huge deficit of Missouri funding. There's about a sixty percent reduction in revenue. Uh, the good news is that we're still getting our money in early years. The bad news is, is we've lost about one point one million dollars from the eleven point seven that was originally promised to us under that plan. So, we're, we're, we still believe we can deliver the interchange project, hundred percent plans are done, but, uh, we did take a big hit from the Missouri funding.
I do have one comment, Mayor. I, I would like to congratulate the police department, and there's some news that came out from some of their actions the last week. They handled themselves well, and you've seen it in the paper, but I think that you're starting to see more activity from the police department, I think it's a positive thing.
Okay. No staff comments, I'll just go to council comments. Thanks, Mayor Payne.
Um, it's been a really, really busy couple of weeks. Uh, first of all, National Night Out was terrific. I was able to ride along with, uh, TJ'd every single, uh, neighborhood watch, and it was very rewarding. Uh, in addition to that, I attended the, uh, Liberty Ranch High School Safety Meeting on how we were gonna deal with the traffic at the new high school. Um, we've had several shop local, uh, meetings, and that's moving along. Uh, I reported on it today at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, uh, which I did attend, and, uh, Dan Lundgren was the guest speaker. It was very, very well attended. Uh, in addition to that, we've had a meeting on the youth master plan. I attended LaHeim Open House. For those who don't know what LaHeim is, it's a women's drop-in center. It's a very important, uh, contribution to our community. Uh, and then today, uh, earlier, I attended the Youth Development Network meeting, and they will be, uh, trying to make a presentation to the council on the fifteenth, I believe. So, you'll get more information about that. Oh, one other thing, I attended the last, um, CSD meeting, the Consumer Fire District meeting. Thank them for their participation in National Night Out. It was, it was awesome, having the police cars, the fire trucks, and ambulances there, and it was great to have that kind of, um, support from their district as well.
Daryl?
No, nothing?
Okay, gone.
Yeah, the National Night Out was very successful, it was very nice, and the people that were, were doing the, uh, uh, hosting at these homes did an outstanding job. I mean, outstanding. Uh, my hats off to them, opening their homes like that. I think they did a great job, and, uh, it really brought a lot of their neighbors out and people to the community, and I hope we can see that continue. Uh, I'd like to also comment about a police report, I'm looking at grid thirty-seven. You know, this, these are some tough months here, usually the summer the heat, crime tends to go up, but I wanna say that our police department still maintains an outstanding, uh, performance, keeping the crime down in this community. It's very impressive. Um, I also wanna make a comment, and I know I shouldn't, I'm gonna make a comment about some accusations toward me tonight. I know I should have a thick skin, and it's not like I haven't been accused of things, but I think it's important that I say this nonetheless. Um, I know there's accusations out there about some of our council members, and I, and, and we need to all keep in mind that that's just what they are, nothing but accusations. And I think that it's sad, very sad, that sometimes you have people who wanna side with one council member or another, and they wanna come up here, and, uh, they wanna make statements, and, and I can appreciate that, and, and I think it's important. What I find sad is that they make character attacks. They make statements that have no facts whatsoever behind them. Uh, if, for no other reason I can imagine, it must be to deflect the issue of a candidate, that their choice perhaps, I don't know. I can only tell you that it's something that bothers me, it doesn't bother me, it's bothered me before I became on council, people who make statements as if they're factual, with no merit, and then they walk away, because to me, I think what they're doing is they're depriving the community of hearing real facts, and being able to make judgments on their own. And I really think that if these people, uh, you know, if they did their homework and, and they knew what they were truly talking about, they'd be up here with papers, and they'd be able to show you some facts, and they won't just blanketly use the First Amendment to, uh, make these statements. Um, when they do that, and I don't care who it is, and I think everybody needs to understand this, is that you're really robbing from the public. You're robbing them from making an educated statement, a decision, rather, uh, from facts that are being put out there. And to me, you're doing a disservice, not to just them, but to everybody. So, the next time somebody wants to come in here, and I don't care which council member it is up here that you're going to attack, you know what? Have your facts together. If you're not gonna, if you're not gonna make factual statements, you really shouldn't say anything at all, because you're only gonna embarrass yourself, and you're gonna question your, and I'm going to, as well as others, will question your credibility. And I think it's a very sad attempt for some people to make that, uh, uh, those statements, so. And I'm gonna let that go at that. That's all I've got, thank you.
Wanted to make a comment on the, uh, shopping center renovations on C Street. Absolutely amazing. I never, never anticipated that the renovation of that project would do so much for our downtown corridor. It looks unbelievable. So kudos to the landowner for, for stepping up and, and making those improvements. Just one more thing, you know, I, I talked again today about the fact that our unemployment rate has gone up in the city, um, people are losing their homes. So many people are suffering. Uh, I think the five of us that sit here are all blessed to live the lives that we live. Many in the community are blessed to live the lives that they, that they live, and to have the things that they have. I would encourage the community, if you have anything that you could contribute to the, the people in this city that are suffering, please step forward and do it. Now more than ever, with, with organizations like South County Services struggling just to find funding, people that are in need are relying on their neighbors in the community to step forward and, and do the right thing. So I encourage you all to do that. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Well, I too, uh, attended the National Night Out, and I saw you whizzing by Barbara a couple of times, code three. And I intended on making about five of them, but I only was able to successfully go to four, and it was very good, it was a great. I'm glad that citizens participated. Other council members, I think, Don, you were able to make one or two. I was told I was right behind you on one or two. And, uh, I did attend the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, luncheon. I believe that someone had mentioned as I was going out that there was over fifty people, and Congressman Dan Lundgren, he kinda talked about healthcare in America, and kinda his views on what we should do, we have to do something. Uh, I did attend the, uh, LaHeim Women's Center. I understand that I had left and you showed up, so I guess we had a council member there for a couple, the first two hours or so. Uh, I just, uh, wanna point out that, uh, kinda cap on Don what you had said. You know, if an individual citizen or a group or business, if you have, uh, what you feel is a misunderstanding, you know, between, uh, the council members, I, I think you do realize that, that we, we have differences of opinion, but we're all approachable and, you know, sitting down and, you know, just talking, and having a cup of coffee, or if it's with me, I can only speak for me, you know, just give me a call, I sat down with staff, you know, and, uh, offer to counsel if there is some misunderstanding. So, I guess we can't really adjourn, we need to go back into closed session, so we'll re-adjourn in closed session.